Where that number is, but we have to divvy it up fairly.
So we do basically run the numbers and base, say, the cent or anything, we can pay the center that share.
Yeah, I mean, it's a difficult situation. Talking about this, this LST, let's just talk about that LST. LST, we have, we're doing, or we're gonna vote on, because the cable franchise is going away. So the cable franchise tax used to be net is about $225,000 a year.
And that was split.
Right, that was split, and it keeps decreasing, I mean, they can tell you. It's decreasing every year for the last four years at least. To now where it's probably 60% of what it was five years ago. I think it's less.
It dropped 20% since 2008, when it was first enacted.
So.
Not what we're talking.
Right, and the needs of large fire and ambulance have gone up substantially since then too. So, you know, I think that it's, our intention is that a tax like this will affect people who are working and not necessarily affect the retiring community that we have, or retirees that we have. So try to put more of the onus on the people that are working, so when they're not working, this goes away for them. You know, where the cable franchise, and I don't want to steal your guys' time, you guys are explaining. You know, that's basically.
Well, yeah, the cable franchise fee was enacted in 2008, and has been going down since then, and if you look at who has cable now, it's huge elderly. You know, and to use, that was created as a vehicle to generate income to pass through to fire and ambulance. But now why should only the cable franchise, why should only people who watch cable support fire and ambulance? Not that we've ever only relied on that, we've gone well above and beyond the cable franchise fee, for example, the radios, any equipment that people needed, any other assistance, paving, things like that, but it just, as Mike and Mark will say, it just wasn't a fair tax when it was started, you know, by a fire board. And I think if anyone, if we didn't have it, and any one of us suggested it, I don't think we, any of us would vote for it. Um, did I give this person the first bite of the apple, or when you can go to the second?
So I know we established possible asking about the cost of the cost. In regards to the current occupation for the charge, what does the revenue generating that over the past couple of years in relation to what this tax will run out of?
So the occupational coverage tax was only $10, and five of it went to the school district. So you went and got your budget, what did that generate?
So, I mean, it's gonna be 75% more, I mean, just by the math.
What?
Maybe it says like 145,000, you know, now it's 158,000.
What?
No, it's 145,000 additional with this. This isn't the only, this is not the only thing we are doing for emergency services, this is one of the things. So the tax restructuring that we're doing is getting rid of the cable franchise fee, enacting the local services tax to the ceiling that it could be at, which is $52 a year, and then enacting a fire and EMS tax. Like, that's the top, that's the top of the tax.
I think 45,000, but it's $10, they go out.
No.
No, no, from the 52.
From the 52.
Forty thousand.
Yes. Because five of it will still go to the school district. Yes, ma'am. The president on the control center. Now, where is the control center in, before? Before, it was the cable franchise. Okay, so that will be in touch with the two, the emergency service or whatever that matters generally.
General.
Has to come out of general.
Well, the tax, the fire and EMS tax cannot be used for them.
No, she's saying this.
Yes, let's, let's try and understand. Local services tax or something like that, we're not talking about a fire and EMS tax.
Well, you said, you said it could be used for emergency, control center is part of that.
Well, it's not, it's not how we're doing it.
Okay.
We're doing that in general.
Because I know that that's the F2.
That's $81,000 a year. And it'll probably be more. What, um.
Any other questions or comments in the public?
Is there anybody on Zoom, is there, oh, there's two people left on Zoom. Does anyone on Zoom have any comments or question?
Yes, please.
And is that Ms. Holder?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, thank you. What's your question?
So my first question is, I actually have a couple of questions, but my first question is, I don't understand why you would want to penalize the people that reside in Middle Smithfield Township and are working. You have, you know, a population of people that aren't working, that aren't necessarily retirees, yet the people that are working and spending money in the township are now going to be forced to pay another tax. Why not just roll it into the property tax so that it's distributed, distributed fairly amongst all property owners?
So, just to be very clear, this is not a tax on residents or property within the township. This is a tax on adult individuals, both residents and non-residents, that are employed or engaged in an occupation within Middle Smithfield Township. It's not, just because you live in Middle Smithfield Township, but if you work outside of the township, you're not gonna be hit with this tax. It's those employees, those individuals that are currently employed within the township or engaged in occupation within the township.
So we're gonna be taxing the people that are working at Price Chopper and CVS and Wawa?
You're already taxed, you are already paying the Burkhonor tax.
I'm not paying it, I don't work in Middle Smithfield Township. I'm asking if that's the intent, that we're going to be taxing the people that work at Wawa and CVS and live in the township?
Well, they don't need to live in the township, they just need to work in the township.
Okay, so that work in the, so we're going to.
Yeah, so if they live in New Jersey and work at Wawa here, they will pay this, they're already paying this tax.
Just kind of that.
And what is the, and what is the reasoning for not, for not enacting a tourism tax and taxing those people that come here and use our infrastructure on the weekends and holidays?
That, that's beyond municipal level. We can't do that.
I.
Hmm.
On entertainment, not.
Yeah, there's, there's an entertainment tax, I think that might be what you're referring, and if you, if you look that up, you'll see all the opposition it gets from the Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau, the Chamber, the tourism industry, it's kind of hard to pass. Now, that's not saying that that idea isn't valid, it's very valid. And this board has already considered and spoken with local business owners to try and get them to collect at their front desk of a hotel or anyone who owns golf, and that's something secretly that we're working on, but tonight, this is where we are for now.
Okay, so that, just so that I am clear and I understand, the LST is taxing people that work in Middle Smithfield Township, no matter where they live?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for answering questions.
You're very welcome, and the property tax that you mentioned is also something that will be done.
Meaning?
Meaning a fire EMS tax on, on, you had suggested the property tax, and that is also something that is going to be done because there won't be enough generated by this local services tax to appropriately support the fire and EMS.
And what is that tax going to be?
Again, this, right now, the public hearing that we're here for and coming on is the LST tax.
Okay, I was just asking based on the comment that was just made, that's all. I, I was satisfied with the answer. I was satisfied with the answer about LST, but then whomever just commented about the fire and EMS tax, so I asked how much that was going to be.
You brought that up also, and I wanted to say that what you had brought up was a valid point because we are doing that. We're not sure how much it is just yet, we haven't completed our budget yet.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, but step by step, and right now, we're doing this LST tax, which comes out to $52 a year, which I'm not a smoker anymore, but what is a carton of cigarettes, anybody?
I, I don't even know why we would make that comparison, but okay. I'm just thinking about the kids that are working at the Wawa, that's all.
Well, if they don't make $12,000, if they don't make, if they don't make anything, they don't pay.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're exempt, if you make under $12,000 a year, you're exempt.
Okay, thank you.
You're a disabled veteran, you know, you're exempt. Oh, where's the other, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Derek.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm thinking it out, the teachers who work at Middle Smithfield, I'm using them as grand examples for the first one. Their checks are produced out of these straws first, so theoretically, their money would go to these straws first. And then my other question is, people with talent communities, and my talent community and their jobs are out in New York or New Jersey, their checks are written out of there, so will a hard climber find those people? They, they have already been doing that, that, that is exactly how the OPT works. And the only, the only reason why I can say that is because that is exactly the situation I had at home, where somebody that lived in my home worked here, but was working for a company that was in New Jersey. So the tax went, but because there was a reciprocal agreement at that time between New Jersey and Pennsylvania, they didn't have to pay two taxes, they paid the one. Yeah, yeah, so that's our understanding of it.
Our understanding of Burkhon is a very good, that's what we're, we're blessed to believe in. And they're doing it for a long time. Are there any other questions to comment?
Ms. Holder, did we get every, all of your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for, for coming and asking.
If there's no other comments, questions in public, I think we can close the public hearing.
Motion.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
And having the public hearing closed, if you want to, if you want to hand motion, we've got the LST ordinance, which would be ordinance number, do we have a number?
We don't have a number, it's 241. 241.
Make that one.
Start.
Any comments or questions, all in favor, all in. So, emergency services now have a vision. Okay, that brings us to the start of the teleconference. Since you have one.
Uh, make a motion from our general cap, $281,193.22.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
All right. Motion from our sewer cap, $116,032.84.
All second, comments or questions, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Motion from Duff cap, $6,844.79.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
All right. And I'm watching all the reviews account, $12,000.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you, Michael. Pat left you for the solicitors.
Sure, the first item on the report is the zoning ordinance, solar energy systems ordinance. If you recall, you reviewed a draft of this ordinance previously, it was sent to the county planning commission, made a lot of comments, I think in response to those comments, you made a couple of slight revisions. We forwarded back to the county planning commission and attached to the commission, we received some review letters from both. The county planning commission still had some kind of carryover, general comments, but the ones that you had addressed with revisions, I believe have been removed in the review letter. And just to refresh your memory, this is an ordinance amendment that would be amending the zoning ordinance to spell out a distinction in excess, accessory solar energy system, you know, principal solar energy system, the principle being those, like a solar farm used for commercial purposes as opposed to someone who has it on their roof or in their yard, it's secondary solar. This has not, this is not a public hearing, this is not, we were adopted this evening. We simply received the county planning commission's comments and attached to the commission's comments. I believe it's on your agenda this evening, in the event you wanted to proceed forward and authorize it to be advertised for a public hearing.
I would give a favor of advertising for a public hearing.
For the motion.
Well, sure, I'll make.
Start.
Any comments or questions? Remember, I checked on that, they were still talking about, at the county planning commission meeting on Tuesday, about the panels being considered pervious versus inerential. Now, we've seen the boxes, that things we now have out there, you know, the wooded areas so that were not clear cut, like another township was great, solar farm, they're, they're, what they were considering, I know you'd be saying, who, who could see a tree in the middle of a solar farm? You know, who would do that, but they were talking about wooded areas that were two acres or more. Now, for us, it doesn't affect us because it's limited to the industrial zone, but anything with mature trees in excess of two acres that would require renewable, regular 20% of maturity would be anything above. But anyway, there's been a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? Okay, do you want to pick a date?
Well, this is the zoning ordinance amendment, so we'll have to advertise it twice in a few successive weeks, so it's not gonna be your next meeting, if anything, it'll be your two in December.
In December, December, what's the second one?
5th and 28th. And then January 3rd tentative, that's organization, but we don't know what the other dates yet in January.
So would you like me to advertise this period in September 28th?
I would be in favor of it, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, please, okay, so all in favor?
All right.
Well, the next item on my, on the report is the zoning ordinance amendments, as this board is aware, what started well before my time was accompanying the zoning amendment, and what I suggested include, slowly bring before you articles or attachments that were part of that with revisions. I'm not sure if you want to discuss that this evening, I, what I have provided for this potential discussion this evening is attachment three, which is the table of use for everything else, but we can discuss, and I can wait for future meetings and stuff.
What's the board's pleasure?
I don't care, I mean, it's all I have, you just say it.
So what I provided to you is, that's a track change version of the attachment three to the zoning ordinance, which is the table of uses, and what I've called out is some comments, and as you can see from the track change, is certain uses that are being proposed to be changed from primarily, it looks like either from permitted to conditional use or from permitted to not, throughout. I don't know if you wanted to discuss any of those specifically this evening. Have you had a chance to look at it, are there any concerns or questions? Do you want to go through them, I don't know if you want to go through in detail, or just let me know if you have questions or concerns with any of the proposed changes.
I, I wouldn't have had no question.
No.
I mean, you add F21 and G13, those seem to be major major things, a few things changed from the major conditional. Fine, I mean, Mark, is there anything in here? Which is the, there is.
The conditional use of R2 and R3, what's permitted in C1 and C2, that's something you really want to.
Well, it looks like it was always permitted in C1.
No, no, so, so again, these changes were made before, before me, but currently, as proposed, agricultural general, the changes are, previously, it was not permitted in the R2, R3, C2 or industrial. And in the R2, R3, it's now going to be proposed to be allowed by conditional use, and in the C2, industrial permitted. And then agricultural intensive, in the RR, it's permitted previously, it's currently permitted, but it's being proposed to be conditional use. And the other change, it was previously not permitted in C2, but it's being proposed. In C2, in C2, correct. Previously in C2, neither were permitted, and as proposed, it's permitted by right. I think what we've done is, when we have certain revisions that you want to maybe revisit, when you look at the whole document, I can ask her if that, and we can revisit that on the larger document. Yep. Part of the vision. The other, and I don't know if we're, we're able to do it this evening, because we're still working through, if you remember, we talked about adding like a mixed use, commercial type use in your zoning ordinance. I was gonna see if you wanted to just discuss, where you would want that and how you want that committed, but we can wait until you get the specific provisions associated with that use in Article 4, but if you prefer to wait. But anyway.
Hi.
Do we want to talk about where you want a special occasion home or any of those others? Or would you wait, would you rather wait until Article 4, before you, Article 4 gives more subsequent proportion of things? All right, and that's, no other questions or comments on the board on that? So all I have is an asterisk, revisit the agricultural general intensive, but we have Article 4 to review. Everyone's okay with the rest?
Yeah.
Okay. You won't move. That's, you know what, that's why I'm asking the question. I don't want to give a guy a response, just allowing certain things and certain bits to press, but some of these things are, you know, we don't have a method in our law, so we don't have a what that person is working towards, whether they need to define it.
Okay, so Michelle, you would ask the, the warrant?
If Pat wants to talk about it.
Well, you can.
We're not doing anything with the agenda, it was under announcements, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Michelle has notified me that there are some slight revisions being proposed for the non-uniform employee pension plans, that's gonna have to be done by ordinance. It's not on the agenda this evening, the ordinances are not, I, I reviewed them, I'm gonna have some slight changes. The ordinances came from, I guess, PMRS, right? So I do have some revisions that I'm gonna make for those. And I'm not sure if you want to, I mean, you can't really necessarily, it's not on the agenda, so I would suggest just giving you a heads up, that there are proposed changes to the non-uniform employee pension plans, and at your next meeting, there'll probably be ordinances for you to authorize for that advertisement for your, what do you mean?
December 5th and 28th.
So it'll be for another ordinance for the December 28th.
That will also be on December 28th.
And I'm just, while we're talking about the board, are you all aware of the proposed changes to pension plan? Everyone in favor moving forward? Okay, good. That's all there.
Then you can speak quietly.
Yeah.
Let's hear the engine news report.
Sure, yes, the first item are off related involved in this, but it was for the tractor supply. I guess they requested a security release of the full amount, they, they requested $754,736.56 based on Riley Associates letter dated November 7th, looks like they had done some inspections over the past couple of months. They had some concerns on the pincing and unfortunate sidewalk, so they were recommending that, recommended $26,250 of that amount, you would retain to cover those remaining items. So they were recommending partial security release of something like $38,486.56. So I guess that the motion gave the board one to grant that partial release for Riley's letter.
Yeah, my understanding is, I believe you discussed that at your last meeting, and I think it was purposeful, and I just confirmed that that revised release letter is consistent with discussion that took place at your last meeting.
Correct.
And that's for that sidewalk?
Yeah, that's what we suggested, so.
Definitely comes to still on.
Right.
So it would be appropriate if you wanted to consider a motion authorizing the reduction of the security consistent with the revised correspondence from Riley.
So do I hear a mention for that? Mark makes a motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Good, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right, so the second item on here is, it's a municipal notification of land, land development for chapter one or two permits. This is from EPL Lucky Utilities. It's for the proposing a ten and a half mile long transmission plant rebuild project that in addition, we go up to the middle of the township, also across Scrout and Smithfield as well. This is a form that the conservation district in D E P require with any construction NPS permits that gets submitted for them, basically, it's a required notification to any municipalities that are involved, or like the project falls within, counties are required to be notified as well. And it's, they're basically looking for the township to complete their six checklist items, they are basically speaking to what's ordinances and comprehensive plans the townships adopted, and would they be just basically to make sure that the ambulance square will be applicable, requires it to happen, and then a signature from a municipal representative. So assuming the motion would be to allow any county representative to complete the required checklist items and sign off on the notification form. And then send it back to EPL.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Who made it first?
My turn.
Okay, so Mike makes the motion in one, two seconds. Okay, any comments or questions on this one? All in favor?
All in.
All right, well, thank you, darling, what do you say? So that brings us to old business. Actually, you know what, I'm thinking under the engine news report, that we wanted to talk about sewer extension, but it's under new business as well, but, okay, so let's go back. So that brings us to old business, and we've been leaving EMS and fire tax on the agenda every single time until we're complete, because we wanted to give as much notice to the public that this is what is happening. We've covered it in the last newsletter, the next newsletter will come out Thanksgiving week, and it will cover it as well. We've covered it in the last newsletter, the next newsletter will come out Thanksgiving week, and it will cover it as well. Mike and Mark, do you have anything additional to say about the fire, any events that? Anyone? Okay, does anyone have any question? Yes.
When is the meeting going to be?
Excuse me?
When is the meeting going to be to discuss that?
So we, we have our budget meetings happening. Our next one is all of our budget meetings are public. Though I might as well have added this to the announcements. Our next budget work sessions are, we have a regular work session every Friday from eight to about ten, where we also discuss budget as one of the thing. We also have a budget work session that we scheduled just for budget. The next one is November twenty first, that's a Tuesday at eight thirty AM. December fifth is when we must present the budget to the public. That's seven o'clock at night. That's a meeting just like this one, a board of supervisors meeting. And every year we present the budget to the public. And then the public has twenty days to examine it before we pass it. So the two meetings through December are December fifth at seven PM and December twenty eighth at seven PM, where we, where we will be acting on the budget. Is anyone else having any other questions or comments? Are you scratching your head and just doing, okay? Just down. All right. So moving on, sale of the municipal golf course authorized bid documents, which I prepared.
So as the board is aware, you've done this once before, at least once before while I was here. Putting the golf court property out for potential sale and bid. We didn't get any responses, need to link bids in response to that one. So this would be again setting out bid documents for people to submit bids on purchasing the property. There are some pieces of the documents I just want to confirm with the board. One of them being how, with the understanding that you authorize this to go out sometime in the next week or so. When and how long would you want to accept bids for?
Oh, we, I'm hearing. Oh, all right, so the dates we discussed were getting this out to bidding as soon as, you know, the documents are ready. And accepting bids until five PM on March thirteenth of twenty twenty four. And that would be the day before the first meeting in March of twenty twenty four. And then opening the bids publicly on March fourteenth of twenty twenty four at seven PM.
So your contract is on March fourteenth?
We anticipate, we have not set the meeting schedule for twenty twenty four yet, but we anticipate it to follow the second or Thursday of the month.
And that would be March fourteenth?
Yes, sir.
At seven?
Yes, sir.
So just want to clear, accepting bids until five o'clock on March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Opening then on March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, seven o'clock at the township board supervisor meeting.
Yes, sir.
The other, some other pieces of information I'll need. As you recall, prior bid, you said a minimum bid amount for property that would be considered a responsive bid. Did the board, does the board have any thoughts on what the amount would be this time around, the same?
I, I would suggest six hundred, we didn't get any responses at nine sixty, which was thirty percent of the grade value. So we're down to twenty percent.
So six hundred fifty thousand? And I think the last piece that would be somewhat different from the first time around would be having a survey of the property. We prior did, we didn't have a survey this time. I believe you have RKRS providing and preparing and finalizing a survey or some type of a survey description of the property, is that accurate?
Yes, we started an all day survey and will have enough of it complete for us to go out and see it. And they'll show us, they'll show us a draft tomorrow.
And the intent is to include that survey in the bid documents for potential bids?
Yes. This hopefully will answer more questions that developers have and give them more of a comfort level. But as well, as well as the increased time to do their deal with you.
I think, I think that's all I need to complete the bid doc. So what I'll do after tonight, assuming you proceed with the motion authorizing the bids to go out. I'll finalize these documents. I'll reach out to the CBRE, make sure they're on the same page, make sure that the virtual deal room is ready to go. It includes the survey once we get that from RKRS. Get advertised, and we'll see what you get this time around. Any questions or concerns, correct? So with that, if the board's ready with those final details, if you wanted to consider a motion authorizing the bid documents to go out once they're finalized and once we confirm with CBRE that they're ready with virtual reroom and also confirming with RKRS, how we get it through.
Yes. Any comments or questions on this? All in favor of aye? That brings us to new business.
Make a motion, adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty three, appoint Riley as our orders for books of twenty three.
Comments or questions? All in favor or aye? One?
Make a motion, adopt resolution eleven twenty twenty three dash two, harder to join your deed. That is in nonstop.
Any comments or questions? All in favor or aye?
Yeah, I saw that.
Well, this is a block hearing, unless, unless that's any, unless that's a violation, I guess you have to donate dollars to receive this. You know, violation associated with that. I mean, there's no improvement on this one. Well, it depends if they have, can they have a permit for both or? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, there's only this round. What I would suggest, maybe mention. Next, resolution number eleven twenty twenty three dash three, Zaidel joined your deed, and that one is in Maro.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, zoning.
Yes, make a motion to release the fire escrow money, help of one zero and seven zero, a core bond.
In the amount of?
Forty three thousand, six hundred dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one is for the Pembot Multimodal Fund Grant Assessment for the sidewalk in front of the Cultural and Community Center and Echo Lake Park. So the total cost of the project is a hundred and escalating to a hundred and one thousand, two hundred dollars. Thank you, Bill Moore, for putting this together and turning it around.
Yeah, that was really helpful, I think, with that.
So the township will provide a thirty percent match. So the grant we are requesting is seventy seven thousand, eight hundred forty six dollars to put in front of that. So I would make a motion to apply to this grant and submit this application. Actually, it's retroactive, we've done it. Of ratifying the grant application. Any comments or questions?
Who did the math? Ben?
No, it was our traffic department did, so it would have been Leslie Gockenau and P G for graphic, or the crystal we're working with.
Because a hundred and one times thirty, ten and twenty three.
I think that's thirty percent of the grant request, so it's to be minus thirty percent of the seventy seven, seventy thousand.
Seventy seven, eight forty six plus twenty three, three, four, three, nine, four.
Oh, I thought it's supposed to be thirteen, project.
No, 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 no.
I usually go written as a percentage of the grant amount, so I.
So for, I think twenty three thousand dollars for a sidewalk all that way is pretty good.
Well, no, it's not. But the total cost of the cost is a hundred and one.
Correct.
And the grant was requested seventy seven, we have to match thirty percent of the seventy seven, which leaves the rest remaining twenty four.
Right, that's us.
So it'll, it'll cost forty seven now.
No.
No, it'll cost us twenty three thousand.
Twenty three seventy seven is a hundred and one.
But anyway, there's been a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Mr. Goll, the second one is for you.
Yeah, make a motion for Mike and Dermot from the golf committee. A visitor when it's at the last meeting. We've had, and attention, and even when it comes to the welcome experience of all kinds, there's included this. We're forward to having him participate.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to release ten thousand dollars for the road bond for EA American for community lake.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we would not amend the agenda to include it, but we have a resolution here authorizing the submission of a grant application for the statewide LSA grant for the sewer expansion down four oh two. We intend to apply for that by the end of this month. So we are requesting a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents for that. Again, thank you, Bill Moore, for assisting us in getting this together. So you can look for that on the December fifth agenda. And that said, we lost the public that we had on Zoom, but we're up to public comment, so. Aside from wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, is there any public comment? From anyone, disdain to you. Well, thank you all for coming, it's such a nice show of support, we appreciate it, everyone. So your favorite motion, my?
To a jury.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.